All right, it is 5:30 and so I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 19th, 2018, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask our chapel, Pastor Womack, to come forward and give our invocation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Almighty God, we praise you, oh Lord. For from the rising of the sun to the going down of the same, your name is to be praised. And we ask your blessing, humbly beseeching you upon this meeting, that you might grant to these our good commissioners wisdom and discernment as they make decisions and consider matters. And we thank you for granting us to live in a goodly land. We simply ask you to bless that in governance and in living as citizens, that we all may be good stewards of that which you have so graciously entrusted to our care. And so we ask your blessing. Amen.
Next, we'll move to public comment session. Don't have anyone signed up this evening, but would anyone like to speak at public comment? All right, if not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike, do you have any?
This stuff I've been working on with the county manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to let y'all, give y'all just a, I think Brandon and I wanted to kind of just touch base on the White House. We were invited, all the county commissioners in North Carolina were invited to the White House for a conference in Washington DC, and Brandon and I were able to make it. And just want to touch base on that a little bit. We were there on Wednesday, and we were fortunate when we were there, we were able to hear from the Vice President, Mike Pence, and HUD Secretary Ben Carson, and then Kellyanne Conway, who is really spearheading an opioid awareness for the administration at this time. And I think they're coming out with some, with an announcement today on exactly what that will be. We both listened to, last night they had a one-hour seminar, I guess you could say a call-in for the opioid, what they were going to be doing. And so I think that's coming out today, their plan for opioids. So, but we were able to attend that, and one of the things that we heard from about all the commissioners was, when we first got the email, we wondered if it was real, and so they did too, because we just, we have never gotten an invitation from the White House. And so, but it was real. And one of the things that I came away with, that this administration wants to hear from the grassroots, local people, and they want to go directly to the local people. So they've given us contacts that we can contact the folks in Washington DC directly that impact different federal programs. So if any of the citizens need help on any of those, I can give them, share those contacts with them. And I think we, I sent that out today to share with y'all, so you would have those. But their philosophy, I think, is they want the, is grassroots and local, and not from the top pushing down. They want to go from, you know, from the grassroots up, if you will. We, I felt like that there was open, that they wanted open communication through all levels of government, was another thing I came away with. And they wanted to hear from the counties, and they wanted us to connect with their departments where we needed help. And they do want to help. And I was impressed with how hardworking everyone was that was there. Some of the commissioners, they even asked questions from across the state. My question was answered about the opioid, but there was some questions about that, about school safety, from other commissioners. They're working on that. On the, there was some concerns about dairy farmers, evidently milk prices have stayed the same, and they're concerned about that, some of the commissioners. There was, you know, like I said before, school resource officers and guidance counselors, they wanted, they was, you know, wanting to, they expressed interest in that, the other county commissioners. The coastal counties have a lot of problems with EPA and dredging, and so there was people there they could talk to concerning that. There was some concern about the 20% match for federal highways that you have to do. And the counties like Wake and Mecklenburg, where they have to add big, you know, federal roads, they were concerned with that. So, but the one thing that, to get movement on any issue, we need to have our senators, all our federal elected officials, if we can have them all united in an issue, we need to gather them together, and then when we go to that department, we can, you know, if you want to get an issue that really everybody's in agreement on, and you're not getting any movement on it, if you can get all your federal officials in agreement, we can move that forward. And that goes a long ways towards, towards, towards doing that. So, but I really, I thought it was very beneficial. We were able to, you know, network with other commissioners and hear what their problems were and everything. So, and I know Brandon will touch base on probably what I've not, but that was my perspective from it, and I appreciate the opportunity to go and for my county.
Thank you, Kevin. Brandon, you want to, I'm not skipping Bill, I'll come back to Bill, but you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I mean, Kevin pretty much took the words out of my mouth. I had made a list of notes here, but, you know, I went with several questions that I wanted to have answered, and all of them were asked and answered during the meeting. One thing I don't think Kevin mentioned was the infrastructure, you know, and the internet issue, and the rural areas that we have. And not only that, but all the things that were mentioned, whether it's opioid or the school safety issues, funding come up quite a bit. And they communicated to us that funding would be supplied once a plan was developed to the state level, and then, of course, we've got to work with our state officials to make sure that's spread out, out our direction, especially past the Boncomb County line. You know, a lot of times we kind of get left out once we get to there. So, I think that's one thing that was touched on. Like he said, there was a lot of questions that were asked, and every time I check them off my list, I mean, Kevin didn't really get the opportunity to speak, but it was impressive being invited up there. As far as I know, no one's, none of the county commissioners have ever been invited to the White House. So, it was, it was refreshing to see that that administration's wanting to work with us on a local level. So, and as Kevin mentioned, we've got contacts of people within the Intergovernmental Affairs Administration that we can contact directly. And several of those spoke, and depending on what the needs were, I feel like they would be very helpful. I think Kevin pretty much hit all the other highlights that I have here on my list. We were on the conference call last night, I was on my way home, and got an email, and we got an invite, or an invitation for a conference call that lasted about an hour, and it was the president's plan to roll out his opioid problem that we have here across our nation. So that was interesting to hear, and them wanting to share that information with us. Like I said, it's just refreshing to see that. So, other than that, I think that's, Kevin pretty much hit the rest of it there, so.
All right. Well, Kevin and Brandon, I really do appreciate you all going to that and representing Haywood County on behalf of all the citizens of the county and making that connection, and hopefully we can get some of those contacts and utilize that. But thank you. Bill?
Mike, it's great. I don't ever remember this ever happening since I've been around, an invitation to the White House, so.
There were Democrats and Republicans there, I should say that. There was, Swain County had a commissioner there, and their county manager. Ardell County had three commissioners, I believe. Mitchell County had some, McDowell County had some. And that's about all from western North Carolina that I remember.
That's all I made, anyway. I think there were probably 120 roughly county leaders there, that's commissioners and managers as well, so. McDowell probably had the most.
Yeah, yeah, they did. They had, they had pretty good contingent.
All right, well, thank you.
We also got to spend some time with our congressman as well on Thursday, which we were given great hospitality while we were there, and they gave us a tour of the Capitol, and it was a good visit, so I appreciate the county allowing us to go, so.
Okay. All right. Next, we'll move to administrative agency reports. We've got an amendment to report, Annual Child Futility Prevention Team Report Amendment. Lisa Davis is going to come forward. Our Public Health Nursing Director, Lisa?
I presented the formal Child Futility Prevention Team Report to you two weeks ago on March 5th. And contextually, the report is correct. However, at the conclusion of my presentation, I said that there had not been a death of an adolescent or child in Haywood County in 2018, but that was a misstatement. And so there has been one death in January, and so I wanted to make sure that that correction was made to you and for the minutes.
Any questions of Lisa? All right, well, thank you for coming back. I don't know that you necessarily had to do that, but we appreciate it.
I wanted to make sure that it was done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we've got Mayor Zeb Smathers from the town of Canton with us this evening to give us an update on the Canton Pool Project, and we may have something for him as well.
Thank you, Chairman Kirkpatrick, Commissioners for having us. First off, when I hear about Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Angelica going to the White House, it seems that we're going to have to add something to the Labor Day Parade now, that two Haywood County folk have entered the realms of the White House, so we'll have to add that to give it the publicity it deserves. But it is a great honor to be here to give you updates about the Canton, actually Champion Credit Union Aquatics Center. And here in a very few short weeks, we plan to open up somewhere about Memorial Day will be the opening, there will be a grand opening celebration sometime either before Memorial Day or sometime thereafter, especially with the, see who are the first people. We haven't said what age yet, or be the first people to go down that huge slide, that three-story slide the pool now has. But the most important thing, I sort of highlight the comments already made, in several weeks, that rec park, our new facilities, our new exercise equipment, and the pool will be full of people and kids from Canton and from Waynesville, and from Asheville, and from every part of this county. And this is truly, it's not just a Canton project, it is a county project and a regional project. There'll be Democrats, there'll be Republicans, there'll be every race, every creed. Everyone there's going to be having a great time, enjoying this wonderful facility that other sponsors, including the county, Champion Credit Union, Ken Wilson Ford, and even brick by brick have helped make this wonderful facility. It is ready to go, it has passed inspections, we had the polar plunge, which was a huge success. I think this is a project that we can be very proud of as at every level of government, whether it be the different municipalities or the county. But I also think it sets another trend that's happening in, whether it be economic development. We are very blessed right now in this county to have all the municipalities in the county working together. I think there's a very cooperative spirit that I can never remember being in this county for a long time. And so whether it be opioids, whether it be economic development, whether it be other recreational opportunities at our ball fields or Camp Hope, I think everybody's on board. And so I'm very excited here to celebrate the pool, but more importantly, to celebrate this new energy and this new cooperative vision that, again, cuts across political parties. And I think it's a very exciting time for me to be mayor, and also I will, I can hear the voices, but I don't send my greetings from Mayor Pro Tem Gail Moll and Ralph Hamlet and James Mark and Christina Smith. They all wanted to be here, but they sent me. But thank you so much for your support and your donation to the project. Again, this is something for all of Haywood County, and we are very excited to get that pool finally open no later than Memorial Day weekend.
All right. And then that's exactly what you had mentioned was our donation, and because of the efforts the town of Canton has taken, and the hits that the town of Canton has taken in putting that pool in.
Yes.
And the appreciation on the fact that there are a lot of county citizens that are going to use that, people from the town of Waynesville and folks throughout the county. The county decided, all five of us unanimously last year, that we would provide a donation of $25,000 to the town of Canton for the, for the pool, on behalf of the county and behalf of the citizens of the county and the people that will be using that, and we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Chairman. That's very appreciative, more than I can say.
I just want to point out a little historical observation. When I was a kid, and your parents, Kirk, and my brother and I were small, our parents used to take us to Canton to swim pool, because we had no swimming pool in Waynesville. You could go down to the lake and swim in the lake, which is what we did, but they had no filter system at that time, it was just lake water. And so our parents preferred, so we would go to, down to Canton, drive down to Canton to the pool frequently during the summer. And then, of course, several years later, Waynesville finally had a pool.
Is that a nice way of asking? You want to be the first one down the slide, Chip, or is that a?
I'd love to do that. If you guarantee I won't break my neck.
Is there any other questions I can answer, any Canton-related issues?
The, I understand the pool is heated?
It is heated.
And so that's going to allow you to be open a little earlier?
What we're, what we're looking to do is partner with, possibly even the county, some senior citizens in projects, swim lessons, that we can hold those very early in the morning with those temperatures, et cetera. And then I think in time, this, in some regards, we're still going to have to work out some issues. There'll be some ups and downs through the year, trying to figure out what works. But the goal is, is that once we get the staffing in place and lifeguards, lifeguard training, I think, begins the third week in April. But I think the goal is, is try to open the pool earlier and have the pool say open later in time. But we've sort of, we need to get in there, figure out what works schedule-wise, but the heating, the heat of the pool will help with aquatics exercises and also swim lessons very early in the morning. And again, I think we're very open, if there is, there's community partnerships out there, people want to use our pool, I think, I mean, we're very welcome to that. I mean, we really want to be as, as open and welcoming as we possibly can be, not just with this facility, but with all of our facilities. And we're very proud of what Jason Braille's been able to do, our Aquatics Center, and also Champion Credit Union, it is the Champion Credit Union Aquatics Center, and we could not have been able to do this without their help. And also David Francis played a major role in assisting us in sort of the communication back and forth from the county and the town early on. So, anything else?
All right.
No, thank you for the update.
Thanks, Zeb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next, we've got discussion adjustment to the agenda, and we actually do have some adjustment this evening. We need to request approval of a renewal contract for charter spectrum internet services for the Haywood County Public Library to be paid from library budgeted funds. So if we could, should we add that under new business? We'll just add it as four. I don't think it'll take us that long to get there once we get to new business, okay? You might have any problem with that? I think it's a kind of an urgent issue. Like it can't wait till next meeting issue. All right, and I guess we'll suspend the rules when we get there to do that. Anything else before we move on to the consent agenda? If not, we'll move to the first item, Consent Agenda, Request Approval of March 5th, 2018 Regular Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any changes, corrections to those meeting minutes? All right, if not, we have Greg West, our Assistant Tax Assessor here, with Request Approval of February 2018 Refunds, Releases, Amendments, and Discoveries. Greg?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to request approval of the February 2018 Refunds, Releases, Amendments, and Discoveries. Pretty much as business as usual in February. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions, Greg? All right, not? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Next is Request Approval of February 2018 Tax Collections Update. Mike Matthews, our tax collector, joining us. Evening, Mike.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. Our current leak, the current collection rate as of February 28th, 2017, or sorry, 2018, is 93.96%. It's about .9% ahead of where we were this time last year. And our delinquent balance is at $3,393,340.
All right. Commissioners, any questions, Mike?
Mike, does that represent, you know, I see this, this week we had several pages of delinquent taxes.
That was, it has a big, a big part of that was people trying to get in before the deli, before the deadline was up. So this was, you know, this is as of February, so they were trying to get in. A lot of, we had a big February due to people trying to get in. We started that a little bit earlier this year than we have been in the past.
So the number you gave us won't be, won't match that number?
Well...
The 3 million?
Oh, no, with the delinquents, no, that will, that's something that we, we just had the big hit January 5th, once everything rolls over, the delinquents goes up, and then they start coming down around this time. So the number, the, the paper really affected most of the current collection rate.
Mike, after the ad comes out in the paper, do you see, see that drop, that delinquency drop quite a bit?
You'll have, obviously, the ones that are trying to avoid the paper, have already come in, but then you'll have ones that'll start noticing it and start getting, I guess, flak from people, they'll start giving us a call and getting things set up. And part of that is, we have to do, we have to do the paper, to do any type of forced collections on them in the future.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Request Approval of Budget Amendment from Julie Davis. This comes from the General Fund for the Haywood County Library, $9,475. Julie, if you could explain this for us?
Good evening. What we have tonight is a budget amendment to appropriate some funds, the $9,475, to cover some security cameras at the Canton Library. And this has been donated by the Haywood County Public Library Foundation, so they're able to put these cameras in due to that donation. And we're running this through the county so we can show it as one of our assets when we have this, have it paid for and booked.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
So the donation's covered 100%, is that right, Julie?
Yes, that's exactly what they're putting in there. I think there's a quote in there that shows exactly that amount, that they're, they're paying.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? Certainly appreciate the foundation providing that. Next, Request Board Approval for the Fiscal Year 2017, 2018 Audit Contract for Ghoul-Kilian CPA Group.
You have a couple of things in your package. You have the contract itself for the audit that's for the year that ends on June 30th, 2018. This is the second year we've engaged Ghoul-Kilian CPA Group. We try to keep them at least three years, potentially more, to give them a chance to recoup some of their, their expenses they incur in their first year. The first thing you have is a representation letter that explains what they're going to do, and then you have the contract there. And we'll, if you approve this, we'll get that signed contract back to them and to the local government commission.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
Just for general information, the amount that was in there, that was, last year when we looked at the three years, it was broke down each year?
Yes, it's the same amount that was broken down each year, and this year is about a 2.5% increase over last year. Sometimes you'll see 5% each year, this is about 2.5%.
But this was basically part of the whole contract or agreement that we had when we entered into it last year?
Yes, yes. We put out an RFP, and we got the request back, and this one was, this was the best, best one for three years.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Julie. After that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. We don't have any old business. Next, we will move to the new business. First item of new business is to request approval of appointments of Claire Carlton and Christine Gibson to the Haywood County Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. Sarah Jane Melton, the Southwestern Commission AAA Director is with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, this is the Haywood County Committee Meeting, Committee that meets in Haywood County that decides where the Home and Community Care Block Grant dollars go to meet the needs of your older adults, the citizens of Haywood County. And we have had some attrition with members that have passed and moved on to other places in the state, and so we needed to fill some, some positions. So Claire Carlton and Christine Gibson have expressed interest in being a part of this committee, so that is our recommendation, that they be appointed.
Okay. So there's two, were there two slots, or just you just have the committee, or they make the recommendations?
There's actually more than two slots. There's probably four or five.
Okay.
We're trying to...
Do we need to get that out in the community, that you need more people on there?
We, we have been.
Okay.
We've put it in the notices several times.
All right.
We're working on it.
Okay.
But we have these two at this point.
All right. All right. Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Melton?
How many do you currently have on the board?
Well, that, that committee is comprised of folks who receive the funds, as well as community members. And so when there becomes an issue with who gets what amount of funding, or if we have a new provider that submits a bid because of conflict of interest, we don't allow folks who are currently receiving the funding to be a part of that decision. And so we need several community members, at least, well, I would love to have five. This will give us four.
Okay.
So that gives us a smaller subcommittee to be able to look at those bids and make recommendations regarding the funding without the conflict of interest.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion that we appoint Claire Carlton and Christine Gibson to the Haywood County Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee as requested by Ms. Melton.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Melton. Next is Request Approval of the Revised Haywood County Public Records Request Policy. County Attorney Chip Key.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, what I was asked to do is review the existing policies that have been in effect for a number of years, to make them in compliance with current law, and also make any other changes I felt need to be made for clarification purposes. Some of these changes are grammatical, some are stylistic, in some cases I brought the language in conformance with the statutes, and in other cases, named the proper offices or officials who are involved in these various tasks. Would you like me to go over all the changes, Mr. Chairman, or just?
Yes, sir, I believe so. There's not that many, if you could just go over those.
Sure. On page one, this is an example of the stylistic change. It did say the Haywood County Government is willing and pleased to make available. We just changed "will make available" to make it more straightforward instead of, instead of saying willing and pleased. And then, also on page one in paragraph 1.3, it had referred to public agencies, we just put the county in there because we're talking about the county, not, not other public agencies. And it says, "The law does not require the county to create records," and we added, "or compile a record that does not exist." That's consistent with the statute. "But only to provide access to records that do exist," which is how it now reads. Then in section two, also at the bottom of page one, we have deleted reference to the Public Information Office because it doesn't exist at this time, and simply put the county, reference to the county manager in there, along with the county manager's telephone number and email address. And then on page two, paragraph two, we, we put in there, where it's under the, under the paragraph reading, "Responding to Request for Conference of Public Records," and now it reads, "The custodian of the records or the Haywood County Manager will make the initial response to the request." In other words, that's that first response that goes out, says, "We've received your request, we're working on it," that kind of thing. Then further down in that same paragraph, again, in a stylistic change, instead of saying whether the request involves, et cetera, we put if the request involves. It's just more clear as to what we're really talking about. Then we struck, in the next paragraph, we struck a sentence because it's inconsistent, in my opinion, with the statute, and also inconsistent with what's something we added later on in these revisions. What it had said was, "Any records or portions of records made available by the county will be provided to the requestor in the same format as they are kept by the county." Well, we can provide them that way, but if somebody wants it another way, for example, if somebody wants us to make, take a photocopy and send a PDF electronically, we have been doing that. Not required to do it by law, but we've been doing it, so we therefore struck that sentence out of that paragraph. Then in the next paragraph, talks about who you appeal to, and again... paragraph. Then in the next paragraph, talks about who you appeal to, and again, it's referring to the proper officer, in this case, the custodian of the records or the Haywood County Manager, rather than the Public Information Director. Then at the bottom of page two, we added the following. Requests for public information which do not identify actual records or documents are not included within the definition of public records. And that's true. And then a discussion or request for an explanation is not included within the definition of public records. And it's clear that that's true as well. So that's a clarification so that the public understands that the purpose of the Public Records Act is not to carry on a discussion about what's, what it means or doesn't mean, but to provide the record for, for the person that makes the request. Then at the bottom of page three, this is the paragraph I was talking about a minute ago. This is what we added, which brings the policy in conformance with our practice and also the statute. It reads, "No request for copies of public records in a particular medium shall be denied on the grounds that the custodian has made or prefers to make the public records available in another medium. The county may assess an additional fee where copies of original records must be made prior to being sent electronically." So we've been doing that, and now it's in the policy that that's what we should do. Those were the changes, Mr. Chairman, except for one other place in the very last paragraph, again, where it referred to the Public Information Officer who does not, that office doesn't exist anymore. So those are the changes that I have suggested, and this has been reviewed by the county manager and by David and others in the office.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions to Chip regarding those changes to the proposed Public Records Request Policy? I actually think during the last few meetings, it's something we, the issues we talked about anyway. All right. Thank you, Chip. With that, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Haywood County Public Records Request Policy as revised.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right. Next, we'll, the next thing is the announcement of the Board of Commissioners' work session. And we've decided, I think on the agenda, it states April 2nd, but we decided to move that to April 16th. Is that okay with you Commissioners? All right. And I guess we will, you want to do that in the afternoon prior to the meeting? Because that's an evening meeting. What time?
We need to do it at 2:00 or do we need to do it at 3:00? How much time do you think we would need?
Well, no later than 3:00. But if, you know, if you feel like, it doesn't interfere with your schedule, 2:00 so that there's plenty of time for discussion. But certainly, I wouldn't think you would want to come any later than 3:00.
We couldn't close at 3:00 if you had a lot of budget information to go up.
All right. 2:00. 2:00 on the 16th.
And will we meet here or will we meet back at the?
Let's meet here.
Meet here.
I think it'd be easier, I think we meet there to accommodate the community colleges and the schools meeting with us. But here, it won't be, it'll be a little bit different. So we'll have a work session April 16th at 2:00. Of course, the public's invited, as always. All right. Next, we've got the one item that we added, and that is to request approval of a renewal contract for Charter Spectrum Internet Services for the Haywood County Public Library to be paid from library budgeted funds. Joey?
First of all, I apologize for the late notice on this one. It caught us very much by surprise. As you guys are aware, we get a reimbursement from the FCC for all of our internet costs for the library system. And that's based on the reduced and free lunch meals that are given out through the Haywood County School System. We qualify for the highest reimbursement, which is an 80% reimbursement, but it requires a rather rigorous process that we have to go through every three years to get a contract for that service and to reapply for the funding. Apparently, this past year, they sent a notification to who they had listed as the contact, which was our previous library director that retired a few months back. So we didn't find out until late last week that we just had a few days before the deadline to qualify for that reimbursement. So thanks to Chip and Candy and Joel and all of administration for helping us get all this nailed down. Really, there's not any change. It is a renewal of service. We had previously, knowing that we would be looking at that this year, as the current contract expires in June, we had already asked for proposals from vendors for the same service at the library. We received six responses. And out of those six, Charter Spectrum was once again the lowest responsive bidder there. And it is the same exact service we have had for the past three years, which has worked really well for us. But they did renegotiate the contract and actually dropped the cost by almost $400 a month. So it is a very good deal. We're very pleased with that. So we're just asking for approval of that contract renewal. The money's already in the library budget. And like I said before, the E-Rate program through the FCC will be reimbursing us for 80% of those costs also.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Joey?
Them numbers sound good.
Yeah?
I said those numbers sound good.
I want you to review my charter bill.
Wow.
All right.
Can you come back more often?
Okay. First, we need a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to go ahead and vote on this. Anybody have a motion to do that?
So move.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the contract with Charter Spectrum Internet Services for Haywood County Public Library to be paid from library budgeted funds.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, you know, Caroline, you might get upset with me if you come forward. I'd like to recognize you. Caroline Rothen is, it is, I say that right? Okay. Is the interim library director and has been the interim library director in place of Sharon since she left. And I just want to recognize her. We've got a new library director coming tomorrow.
Today. Today. Starting today.
All right. And Caroline's done, I'm on that library board, and she's done a great job. She kept everybody happy, the employees happy, and kept everything moving and pretty seamless. And I think the board would support that as well. And I just wanted to say that we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I also add that how, from being new myself and going into the library with an interim library director, she did a fantastic job. And I was more than pleased to work with her during that period of time. Also want to say that the new library director did report today, Kathy Vosler. There will be a reception for her from 5:00 to 6:00 on Wednesday that the foundation is, am I correct on this? The foundation that is giving that reception. So certainly the county commissioners and the public's invited to come by and pay their, their best wishes. Caroline will be there as well. So be a good time to speak to her as well.
They're welcome to sit in with me on the meeting as well. So I'm on the library board. Anytime.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, handler.
And that's at 4:00. Library Board meeting's at 4:00. Okay. All right. Well, that's it for open session, unless any commissioner has anything. All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6, and attorney-client privilege, North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11A3.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are in closed session. Thank you very much for attending this evening. We are back from an extended closed session when we have nothing to offer the public, but we got a lot of stuff done.
Did.
We're working hard. Does anybody have anything else for open session?
[laughing]
Nobody? All right. Now I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.